The five thirty PM, the end of review session will begin now, following immediately the City Council meetings of May seventh, twenty twenty five. All order, et cetera, approval of minutes, report for upon a public hearing. We have ordinances on second reading, number one, and ordinance authorizing and releasing restricted affordable housing units from the applicable affordability control pursuant to NJAC five eighty, yeah, twenty six, one. Uh, require the uniform housing affordability controls. Number two is an ordinance to amend the financial review between the City of New Brunswick and then Jersey Innovation Urban Renewal LLC for block seventeen oh one, lot one oh seven, slash the sale. Number three is an ordinance for the temporary closure of George Street between Albany Street and Byers Street from Monday, June second, twenty twenty five, through Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty five. Number four is a bond ordinance for the stormwater utility not to exceed three million dollars. We have ordinances on first reading, number one, an ordinance to amend supplementary revised awards to the City of New Brunswick, Title ten, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten twelve, Traffic Control Regulation, Section ten twelve oh six oh, schedules eight B, eight C, and eight D loading zones in regards to Third Street and Patterson Street. Is that number two, an ordinance to amend supplementary revised awards to the City of New Brunswick, Title ten, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten twenty, Handicap Parking, Section ten twenty oh one oh, Schedule thirty nine Parking Zone for Handicap Persons, adding two sixty one Townsend Street, one seventy seven Lawrence Street, and two seventy eight Stamford Street. Number three is an ordinance to amend and supplement revised awards to the City of New Brunswick, Title ten, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten twenty, Handicap Parking, Section ten twenty oh one zero, Schedule thirty nine Parking Zone for Handicap Persons, leading forty five Juliet Street, adding forty five Juliet Streets, different by their number. We then have resolutions, one to forty five, pulling twenty six. Number one is approved agenda amendments, number two is approved payroll, three authorized refund for redeemed tax sales certificates, four authorized purchase by construction under New Jersey State approved co-op for the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. Uh, number five is authorized purchase by vital statistics under New Jersey State approved co-op uh for the Educational Services Commission again. And number six is a resolution authorizing interlocking service agreement with the Borough South Order. Number seven is set hearing date relative continuation or termination of contingent conditions on agency licenses for the Vine, Royal LaFerrosa, and the Gala. Number eight is a resolution provided for conditions of temporary closure of George Street from Monday, June second, twenty twenty five, through Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty five. Number nine, approved request for solicitation of funds requested by Alpha Chi Omega, Saturday, April twenty sixth, at Buglo Park. Ten is approved request for solicitation of fund requested by Rockford University, Sister to Sister, uh, also Buglo Park a week later, or about the same, uh, same date. And number eleven is authorized, approved authorization to advertise for Rockford's building water main replacement project, phase, uh, eight. Number twelve, approved order contract with Colonial Brothers Incorporated for New Brunswick to have improvement. Thirteen, approved authorization to participate with the Borough of Palan Park requested by Division of Recreation for the fireworks, July third. Number fourteen, approved relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Underground Utilities for sidewalk repair that's real free George Street as a result of their six inch water line leakage. Fifteen, approved amendment and resolution R one two two, four five nine, extension of date for relaxation of the city noise ordinance by Alpha Media for the rehabilitation of existing advertising billboard sign at One French Street. Sixteen, approved relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Pike Construction Company LLC, new construction of the Sterling side residences at the fifty Nielsen Street. Number seventeen, approved resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of grant agreements in the Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for the Nelson Street Park Development. Number eighteen is approved amendment and resolution R zero six two four one zero, additional amount of fifteen thousand dollars with amendment Scotland and Bowman LLC for legal counsel services. Number nineteen, approved agreement with Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital for extra duty police officer at the emergency department. Number twenty is approved services agreement with St. Peters University Hospital for police services within the emergency department. Twenty one is approved request for use of city property requested by the Paul Robinson Community School for the Arts, New Brunswick Board of Education, where Paul Robinson Community School Field Day, Easter Park. Twenty two, approved request for use of city property requested by the New Brunswick Middle School, New Brunswick Board of Education for their eighth grade picnic event for the youth sports complex. Twenty three, approved amendment and resolution R one two two, four three four, additional amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars for the Garden State Veterinary Services for after hour emergency veterinary services. Number twenty four, approved relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by First Property Management Exclusion LLC to install six three inch wide soil moors on the sidewalk in front of ninety six Byers Street. Number twenty five, approved amendment and resolution R zero nine two four one two, additional amount of five thousand dollars for Ingram Library Services for books purchased from a wholesale distributor. Twenty six has been pulled, number twenty seven, approved request for use of city property, street closing and sidewalk closure by the New Brunswick City Market for a car show on Martin Square Park. Number twenty eight is approved request for street closing and use of city sidewalks requested by New Brunswick Board of Education for the end of year community fair. Number twenty nine is approved resolution authorizing a memorandum of agreement between the City of New Brunswick Police Department and the Milligan County Prosecutors Office. Third, approved amendment and resolution R zero one two five eight nine, reason to relocate funds in the amount of sixty thousand seven hundred seventy six thousand ninety nine cents to be utilized for this purpose. Thirty one, authorized tax collector transfer over payments on several tax and utility accounts. Thirty two, approved resolution authorizing application to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone, UEZ, authorizing for zone assistance funds, uh, with neighborhood clarification. Thirty three, approved resolution authorizing application to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone, UEZ, authorizing for zone assistance under funds for marketing and events. Thirty four, approved resolution authorizing application to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone, UEZ, for enterprise zone assistance funds, evolving loans. Thirty five, approved resolution authorizing application to the New Jersey Ur- UEZ, authorizing the first, uh, generation enterprise zone assistance funds for the fast half, first half administration. Thirty six, approved resolution to repair amendment of the zoning board ordinance, City Planning Board for review and report in regards to some residential drivers industrial. Thirty seven, approved amendment and resolution R zero three two, three two zero, additional amount of thirty thousand dollars with Nicosia for credit card processing for municipal court fees. Thirty eight, approved amendment and resolution R one two two, four nine three, change order number four, file credit with Shogur, Shogur Property Services for a Jules Lane Water System, it will not constitute an increase of twenty percent. Thirty nine is au- authorized renewal agreement with the County of Millisack with basic life support programs for twenty twenty five. Forty, approved shared service agreement with the New Brunswick Board of Education for reimbursement for provisions of city services in the amount of four million fifty three thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. Forty one, approved amendment and resolution R zero nine two three two four, change order number two, file credit for top line construction corporation for Bandai Avenue Broadway improvements. Forty two, approved amendment and resolution R zero seven two four one two, reason one year contract extension with Acture LLC, LLC doing business as more decent rented services. Forty three, approved request for use of city property and use of the city sidewalk requested by Mayrow Wegman for family event for NJAC members. Forty four, approved request for use of city sidewalk enclosure requested by Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital for dedication of the Mars Center Pavilion. And forty five, approved request for street closing requested by Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital for a food truck event for our WJU employees. We then have items for discussion by council, public comments, and dates to remember, the next meeting will be May twenty first at five o'clock. Any other questions?
Councilmember Estebar.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming is absent. Councilmember Gaskins.
Here.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig is absent. Council Vice President Castaneda.
Here.
Council President Anderson.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the City Clerk, has been placed on a appropriate bulletin board in City Hall, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, made in the omnibus. Would you please stand and be kept away from the meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a basic amount of silence for our men and women who are serving our military, not only in the United States and overseas, but even those who come back. Thank you.
I move a minute. Councilmember Estebar. Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin. Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Uh, Madam President, the correspondence from the director of the appropriate departments.
Yes, Council President, the correspondence received by the City Clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
We have ordinance with, uh, discussion on second reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the release of restricted affordable housing units from the applicable affordability control pursuant to the NJAC five eighty twenty six, one, uh, correction for the uniform housing affordability controls. Mr. Dominguez, can you give us a little background?
Certainly, thank you, Council President. Um, what this ordinance intends to do is to enable the city that on certain edge cases, uh, to be able to release owner occupied affordable units who have completed their minimum ten year affordability requirement in the unit, to be able to, uh, sell to a market buyer after that period has elapsed, but only on certain edge cases. Uh, the ordinance is a broad enabling ordinance, but we intend to only use it narrowly for uh, certain cases. And one example that I give is there was a lady who reached out to us who has developed an illness in her old age, and now her condo unit, which is owner occupied second floor, third floor, you don't forget which, uh, she can't use the stairs, or she's increasingly unable to use the stairs. If she is required to sell through the affordability process, it's a lengthy process, brutal process, hard to get buyers who are qualified, people fall through the cracks multiple times, it's often a six to twelve month process. Uh, it would allow us to be able to release that unit and allow this person to be able to sell and move into a compatible unit for her new life condition. Um, and so that's what this ordinance would enable us to do, is to be able to help people in certain edge cases, uh, not have to sell, uh, to an income eligible buyer, uh, which by the way, is also a restriction that that buyer would not have. So if you've got your ten years and, uh, you have your ticket and you sell to an income qualified person, that person has no income, no restrictions after that, they could flip the house immediately for full profit. So, uh, I want everyone to understand that there isn't any meaningful, uh, protection for that unit post sale anyway, even if, uh, they were not released from that operation.
Thank you.
No, I think this is a media struggle.
Any other fellow councilmembers have any questions? Okay, uh, we're preparing to open up the public hearing on the ordinance only, for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Any members of the public who should speak on this ordinance, please approach the council by the microphone. Again, you have up to five minutes, one time up, and if you can say your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore, I just have a quick question, so, okay, you said that you have one person, but my question is, okay, say you get someone, who's the person we contact the, the goal of this matter?
Dominguez.
So in terms of, if someone wants to pursue this avenue for their unit that has that restriction?
Yes, who, who in charge?
So generally speaking, these restrictions were imposed through HMFA, uh, but they are units in New Brunswick, so I would, uh, just like this person did, I would recommend that to the person inquiring for this, to reach out to NJHMFA and ask them for the steps to, uh, reach out to us to, to explore the opportunity if that's something that we would be amenable to doing.
Thank you, well said.
Thank you. Anyone else on this ordinance only? See you, ma'am.
Move the ordinance.
Councilmember Estebar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number two is an ordinance to amend financial agreement between the City of New Brunswick and NJ Innovation Urban Renewal LLC for block seventeen oh one, lot one oh seven, the DeSail. Is that Mr. Shandey?
Yes. Thank you, uh, Mr. President, members of council. Uh, this ordinance seeks to amend the financial agreement between the city and New Jersey Innovation Urban Renewal LLC, uh, to include a parcel of land, which is about point three five acres, uh, which is known as the DeSail or a plaza area, which sits between H one and H two. It was always the concept of the Felix development to have this plaza or open pedestrian area, except the precise area could not be determined until after the plans for H two, the Nokia uh, building, were, were finalized and that boundaries were actually set. Now that that has occurred, um, we are going back and seeking to amend the financial agreement for H one for with New Jersey Innovation Urban Renewal, just to include this parcel point three five acres of land into the financial agreement for H one, and it will also be by New Jersey Innovation Associates Urban Renewal, just as the complex for H one is so called.
Thank you very much. Any other fellow councilmembers have anything? Okay, again, we're gonna prepare to open up the public hearing on this ordinance only, for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Any members of the public who should speak on this ordinance, would you please approach the council by the way of the microphone, give your name and address for the public reference. See you, ma'am.
Move the ordinance.
Seven.
Councilmember Estebar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. And number three is an ordinance to the temporary closure of George Street between Albany Street and Byers Street from Monday, June second, twenty twenty five, through Monday, October twentieth, twenty five. Do you have my fellow councilmembers have anything? Okay, we'll prepare to open up the public hearing on this ordinance only, same thing for up to five minutes per person, one time up for this. If any members of the public who should speak on this ordinance, please approach the council by way of the microphone and give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm just Daniel Moore. Once again, I will have to say due to where, like I said before, George Street has not been working out with you, and I would give you heads up due to where, just like the Lord showed you last time that I was talking to you, how often it will rain, it's gonna give you the future, what I see as well, and be rain, because like I said, the Lord's not happy with you because you're not making things proper. With you, as I spoke on the ordinance with no smoking in park situation, if anything, as many people as you could see complaining, all of you who are on Facebook complaining about, they do not want their families around people smoking marijuana, that should have been included with the ordinance, with no smoking in park, and the same thing down on George Street as well.
I believe we haven't done that already.
I, I did not, I'm not gonna say, in other words, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna say you did or did at this point, I'm, I'm not gonna argue with you, due to what I said, with the medication I'm on, I'm not gonna argue with you if you did something, I admit that I do be confused sometimes, but like I said, I understood due to where, that was one of your situations, why you weren't getting any people, and I meant it was brutally dead, it was so much wind, so much rain through the entire, well, almost the entire time you had this closed. And then the other issue is parking, where what, the parking authority raised up the prices for parking, due to where, what? Those are the two biggest issues, and then other than, like I said, uh, you did, um, removed the fences and all with the homeless, uh, and all, but like I said, due to where, I, it's nothing that I have against the outdoor dining, because like I said, one thing that I love down there, and I recorded myself, due to where, music, and any, any type of music, whether I understand it or what, it's, I, 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 I like, with, with the rhythm, due to where music is my type of therapy. So it's not like I'm against your outdoor dining, it's just that I don't, I'm just telling you what I see people talking about, talk, talking about, and like I said, most of you, the main ones who've been here, it's not like you're not under, uh, streaming, you were the crime watch, due to where you didn't, it, it wasn't posted, people saying, come on, enough with this smoking, whether it's illegal or not. Now, like I said, if you said that you do have, that went through, or it will go through, like I said, I'm not gonna say, oh, then we keep up with most of this stuff, like I said, because I'm on too much pain medication, but like I said, those were the main two issues, why, that last year, I meant you didn't hardly get, in only one place that really made money, that, that, uh, was the tavern, if I correct it, like I said, medication, but like I said, that was the only one out of all the closures that you really had, due to where a couple of them, even when they couldn't afford it anymore, you had to remove the tables, due to where, where what, no business. So like I said, those two, I, I know you can't do anything with the parking authority that's to help them with their debt and all, with raising the price, what, like I said, one thing, due to where, I hope you said you will, will look into, or is it done, due to where, please respect people, due to where, what? I admit, just like you said, with the parks, main thing, you don't want people smoking around children, what, like I said, people don't want their kids to be, that that could be smoked around their ki- ki- kids. So that's all I really have to say, I have nothing against outdoor di- dining, like I said, it's not like I didn't enjoy myself down there, and then hopefully you will bring back another thing that was entertaining, that was bringing more, more in, other than the dance, that was when you had the nice TVs there, oh my, did I see people enjoying themselves, yeah, let's go, let's go, with all the games and all, that was another thing that was missing yesterday, uh, last year. So like I said, thumbs up, but like I said, until you make things right, Lord's not gonna be happy with you, due to where I just see a lot of rain, no matter what, for this year, sad to say, but that's how it's gonna be, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Shandey, we did pass the smoking ordinance?
We did, Mr. Council President, um, it covers parks and particular events that are hosted by the city, like the, uh, Raptor River Festival, uh, it doesn't cover the downtown areas.
Okay. And this, the, uh, TVs, are they coming back this year?
So we have, yeah, we have an entire agenda, uh, from June through October, we have live music, we have TV traps, we have FIFA coming to New Brunswick, so we're gonna be doing some soccer related programming, uh, for fans, uh, we're also hosting Christmas in July, and up to October best.
Thank you.
And we're still adding program.
Sure.
We also, I'll just add first, uh, we've also spoken to, um, several of the businesses that will be coming outside, some of them of which will offer some public seating, but it will be managed by those restaurants, there will not be public seating from City Market, um, so they will be, the oversight will be by the restaurants, but they will have some vehicles that will be open to the public.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, um, Agent Mike Laston, Public City Streets, um, I was actually gonna ask about programming details and inclusion of public seating, so if she has a question, that's all I have.
Okay, well, got it, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Barbara Keaton, uh, Seven Livingston Avenue. Could this ordinance be amended to strike out, uh, Albany Street and insert George Street? That would still allow people opportunity to turn off of twenty seven, go up George Street and turn on church, they can either go left or right, come back to twenty seven, and circumvent, uh, George Street being closed. Because Harvest Moon, I think it is, they don't do a lot of business, there's always empty there, so if you back it up, uh, a block, people could still get around New Brunswick without going all the way over to the Hyatt or going back over by, um, that underpass by the train station, so, that's a recommendation, could they look at that? And people can still park in the George Street, I mean, in the Church Street parking lot, and the one, uh, there's two ones on Church Street, the one right across from Saul, and if you cross over George Street, there's another parking deck, and as I said, they can go back to twenty seven or back towards, uh, the courthouse.
Mr. Shandey, do you have a Harvest Moon backing?
Yes, and we also have a new restaurant there, Kaiser, uh, who said that they are sitting coming out, I've also spoken to Salad House, that is, they are looking, uh, to put some tables outside.
My, my understanding, Kirk, we're along, but Church Street is still gonna be open?
Right.
Yes, yes, Church Street will be open from Nielsen all the way to Spring.
So they would have access to.
So they would have access.
Oh, that's type of mess.
And we also have some.
Say that again?
You can, it's the same thing, you, you can go down by the Hyatt, make a right on Church Street, come all the way to Church, all the way to Spring Street.
Okay. Church Street would still remain open?
Would be open.
But not from what you're saying, from Albany Street, if I want twenty seven, I can't turn on to George Street to go up to Church to make a right.
All the one way streets will still be open, so you can't do, you go down to Nielsen and then come up Church.
Okay. Uh, is the public, uh, bus company going to put up signage? I came last year and I said there's no signage, people who are in town, use public transportation, they don't know where the bus stops are, are, uh, there's inconsistency to when they're stopped, the eight fourteen sometimes goes down New Street, or sometimes it goes straight down and come down Liberty, it's inconsistency, we gotta get on the same page with this bus. The buses.
Yes, we usually reach out to the bus companies, uh, and advise them that the road will be closed, and they normally post in the shelters or on signage next to the shelters where the closest, uh, station is to pick up, it's usually on Nielsen Street.
Okay, I live in that area, this is my fifth year living in downtown New Brunswick, there's no signage, there's inconsistency with the bus drivers and where they go, so it has to be more them reaching out, there's gonna be a handshake, a pat on the back, something.
Well, that's gonna be up to the transportation company, um.
But you, you, you want this done, but you're not thinking about the people who live in New Brunswick, who take public transportation, I live right, I, I live at Seven Livingston Avenue, the bus stops right in front of the library, so now I gotta struggle with my bags, three blocks to get to my door, because sometimes they turn on New, sometimes they go down Liberty, there's gotta be some consistency.
You're talking without the road closure.
Without the road closure and with the road closure, because the eight fourteen goes down George Street, now you've closed it, so now they're going all the way around to where the Hyatt Hotel is, versus coming straight down Livingston Avenue, past the Dunkin' Donuts, and, and go back.
Ms. Barbara, I think we can communicate the bus, it, it seems like that was an issue outside of just the street closure, so we'll reach out and.
Right. Yeah, we can say that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? See you, ma'am.
Move the ordinance. Sergeant?
Councilmember Estebar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. And number four, the bond ordinance for the stormwater utility not to exceed three million dollars. Do you have my councilmembers have any questions? Same thing, we're preparing to open up the public hearing on the ordinance only, for up to, uh, five minutes per person, one time up, as usual.
Hi, yes, I, I will say this before I get started on this, I don't find it appropriate to, wow, you wait till I leave away from the microphone, you tell me, okay, you believe that this has been approved already, and wow, you wait till I leave from the microphone, and then Mr. Shandey comes in and tell me, oh, that was not approved already, due to, due to where, what, and then I don't get a chance to come back up here, my five minutes was, wasn't over, I find that very disrespectful.
Yeah, up to five minutes.
Well, and the buzzer didn't ring, like I said.
Not when you're away, that's it.
Why do you still keep waiting until mainly I move away from the microphone, what, then, then?
Come back, yeah.
Well, then, what, then, please, I find it very disrespectful, due to where you're gonna tell me that it was approved, you believe it was approved already, and then you wait till I walk away, and then Mr. Shandey told you, what, it was not approved?
Right, yeah, we're gonna be.
Well, then you need to work, you need to work on something where respecting people when, what, go back to normal, what, oh, Paul, the buzzer, okay, you don't, let, let's, whoever speak, and then, okay, we get our answer, there will be no problem. What, hold on, the buzzer, okay, you don't, then let, let whoever speak, and then, okay, we get our answer, there will be no problem. But I find that very disrespectful, it's not the first time you did it.
Bond ordinance, right.
Well, it's not the first time you've done it to, to me, and I'm, I'm serious, please, uh-
Okay, I follow that.
And please, you guys need to really make, make fun of that. Now, uh, may I please ask, due to where I know several ordinance have been going through with the water utility, can I please ask what this extra three million dollars is going on for, and what? Do we expect to see another, uh, a pri- price, I believe it's close to twenty dollars now, the stormwater on the water bill? That would, this include that we would have to start paying for, re- residents will have a little more percentage on that? Will you please tell me the difference with all the other ordinances that have been passed on the stormwater?
Uh, Mr. Kamel?
Yes, thank you, Council President, um, our mayor of this council and administration are bold and brilliant in their commitment to the environment and our resources. What this represents is the city backing up an application where we are going for funds that the state will provide to allow us to buy equipment, to get the salt off of the streets in winter, and all of those other things that the Stormwater Utility does. Now, with this program, with this bond ordinance, it proves to the state that we should do this project with or without them, and this program has with it one hundred percent forgiveness if we do it right. So that's the purpose of this bond ordinance, and when everything is done, there will be no increase relating to this ordinance.
So no in, what about no increase or increase on the, on a resident's water bill?
No, this is on the Stormwater Utility, which the stormwater fee is on the water bill, but it's separate.
Okay, so, thanks.
It's within the Stormwater Utility.
All right, thank you, well explained, due to where, like I said, we will be expecting a lot of rain this year, so like I said, yes, it's time to really pay attention to- Yeah, you, you smile at me, not like that I like rain, but due to where I am a person where, how many times I warned you, what's coming along? What, you can't say, it wasn't two, how many years that I told, I proved to you that I have special vision, I can see what comes in ahead of time. But, but like I said, due to where it sounds great, and like I said, honestly, uh, we need to be prepared for what I am seeing. Like I said, what, it's not like I like rain, you know, what, rain brings my pain, so have a good, thank you, well explained.
Thank you. Anyone else on the bond ordinance?
Move the ordinance.
Second?
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Okay, we have ordinances on first reading. Number one, is an ordinance to amend supplementary five general notices of the City of New Brunswick, Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten twelve, Traffic Control Regulation, Section ten twelve oh six oh, Scheduled eight D, eight C, and eight D, loading zones in regard to Church Street and Farrington Street.
I move the ordinance sitting down May twenty-first, twenty-five, at five P M, same date we have for us.
Okay.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have number two, an ordinance to amend supplementary five general notices of the City of New Brunswick, Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten twenty, Handicap Parking, Section ten twenty oh one oh, Schedule thirty-nine, Parking Zone for Handicap Persons, adding two sixty-one Towne Street, one seventy-seven Lawrence Street, and two seventy-eight Stanford Street.
I move the ordinance sitting down May twenty-first, twenty-five, at five P M, same date we have for us.
Second?
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number three is an ordinance to amend supplementary five general notices of the City of New Brunswick, Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten twenty, Handicap Parking, Section ten twenty oh one oh, Schedule thirty-nine, Parking Zone for Handicap Persons, deleting forty-five Juliet Street and adding forty-five Juliet Street, a different placard number.
I move the ordinance sitting down May twenty, May twenty-first, twenty-five, at five P M, same date we have for us.
Second?
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We now have the, uh, Resolution one to forty-five, except for twenty-six. Members of the public, who would you comment on any of the resolution? Please come up to the microphone, tell us what number you're talking about, and do your name and address for the record, and we have up to five minutes, one time up.
Hello, Agent Lee Class One, Public City Avenue Streets, so the question resolution I wanna ask about is number six on the agenda, um, so it's a specific-
Can I interrupt you, and, uh, can I ask some of the people about some of the ordinances, so your five minutes have not stopped, sorry, you may get somebody to answer the question, of course, right? Okay? Uh, number six, uh, Mr. Jules?
Yes, President, I'm Mr. Council. Um, the city's entering into an interlocal agreement with three other cast members of the Millsex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, Millsex Jip for conversational purposes, including South River as lead agency for legal services and coordinated dissolution of Millsex Jip. As you may recall, the city left the Millsex Jip in the end of twenty twenty-four, and joined the Mid Jip in twenty twenty-five. At the same time that we left, all the remaining members of the Millsex Jip left as well. The Millsex Jip is now in a runout state, which means it's operating solely to service claims from twenty twenty-four and prior years, and there are no active members, so there will be no new activity for twenty twenty-five. Subsequently, the regulators from the Department of Banking and Insurance, also known as DOE, uh, have requested that the city maintain a commissioner in the Millsex Jip to formally develop and implement what's called a dissolution plan. A dissolution plan is required by recognition in statute. The city intends to cooperate with DOE's request to the extent that our claims are paid and matters in twenty twenty-four and prior are properly managed.
Thank you. Mr. Shami, do you have anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay.
South River, who are the other members that we're working with on this?
Now, President, I'm going to refer Mr. Shami, this is a matter that is somewhat litigation.
Right, well, the other two towns are Parkaret and the New Brunswick Parking Authority, which is was a member. This particular matter does involve litigation. Litigation involving the Department of Banking and Insurance. And that's what the joint agreement is about, the legal services in connection with that particular matter that Mr. Drew was discussing a few moments ago.
Right. Thank you. And so is it that we are, like New Brunswick and the other three members are hiring like external legal counsel, or is it that the city attorney for South River is representing all of the towns? What's the arrangement there?
If I may, the lead counsel and the counsel that is handling the matter is the attorney for the borough of South River. That's why it's an interlocal for legal services with South River.
Okay.
We're getting a South River rate if you will.
Great. Always, always good to work together and get a good deal. So this, you know, the issue with the joint insurance fund, obviously something that's come up a number of times at previous meetings and have a little bit of a rocky history, especially at the tail end of last year. Another, you know, speaker at the most recent meeting, you know, gave some context on that, of that issue with the JIP and Mr. Drew has said that the facts were not accurate, but from what Mr. Drew has said today about how it's, you know, creating a dissolution plan, you know, the legal services agreement is to cooperate with the state, with what the state had said is that the JIP didn't do things the right way the first time, so they have to do it better next time. I'm just curious, you know, this seems like a marked departure from the past narrative from the state on the JIP, so what facts are inaccurate? What specifically did the city take issue with in the previous speaker's comments last week?
We, this is pending litigation, you don't discuss facts or theories of law as we see them in a public forum such as this. So fortunately, we're not going to debate the facts that we see and the facts that we, the other side sees. It's pending litigation, so it would be inappropriate for us to discuss that.
Okay. I mean, you know, I do take issue with that slightly, just that if you, you know, if you're going to go out of your way to say that something is wrong, it does seem like you should say then what you write answer is, otherwise it's just confusing and complete story that no one can really parse out what, what reality is. So just food for thought in the future, if you're going to make assertions that someone else is incorrect, please offer a, you know, a counter narrative for what you believe is correct. So that's what I have on, on resolution number six. And then another resolution I want to ask about is number twenty-four on the agenda of the legal testing. I'm just curious if we have information on what specifically is being tested for, what clinicals?
No?
This is actually just a due diligence to, there may have been some sampling that might have suggested they needed more sampling. I can get back to specific details, but specifically, typically to hydrocarbon, we'll do it before some type of fuel.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I was going to ask if this is a, you know, testing that's on a routine basis where there's a special reason. It sounds, from Mr. Juanz's comment, that there was a previous test done that was questionable results in that's the reason for the subsequent test. Is that accurate?
Reactor, if you want to do that.
It, it appears to be, but I can confirm that offline. So the, her previous statement appears to be somewhat correct, yes.
Okay. Does this know the actual report to and update to that in the future?
Okay, thank you.
Hi, thank you. That's the reason why I asked that due to where I know you didn't explain what the resolution was might be used to do. That's why I didn't go up first to see what you were going to do. But I will jump, go from basically six to eighteen based on either lawsuits. Is the city choosing type of lawsuits that they can handle due to where I know the city, where I've been hearing from a few people saying due to where you would not, you've been trying to remove their lawsuits, telling them due to where what, the insurance company has no more money?
Are you talking about number six?
Uh, you can say six and eighteen at the same time. So is the city having, uh, choosing what lawsuits that they're going to, uh, uh, take?
Um, I'm certain that the city chooses.
No, we can, why I'm saying this due to where two reasons, because basically lawsuits that I'm talking about are all by black people, from black people who are filing lawsuits. And then that's why due to where, like I said, people who got guaranteed were who that will win against the city, have they been telling their lawyers that what, you have, and then have no insurance, enough, not insurance right now?
I don't believe that race factor is included at all.
Well, then, I think you ought to look into, because like I said, I will provide the evidence sooner than later, because like I said, even though my phone's blocked from getting to the news channel and my emails, I'm going to work it out somehow to get all the evidence to the, the news about with the insurance company with lawsuits where you're choosing people, oh, and you're telling their lawyers due to where, sorry, we, we go, we have an issue with the insurance, we don't have enough of your lawsuits.
Uh, I will go back to another one that I saw. I think that, uh, let me see, the back. I just want to add to the, the, you know, Mr. Dominguez, thirty-six. It is basically what I was speaking on about since I seen this climate board and zoning board about parking standards. It is basically what I was asking about on Parkville Street due to where the apartment has been built on the corner of French and Colts. Well, if this was where, like, where actually where once this resolution went through with them, they said no residents in that building will be allowed to have a vehicle that, that moved in it. So is this, does this have a connection with that?
Mr. Dominguez?
May Council President, Ms. Moore's referencing a conversation we had at the Traffic Commission last week. This has nothing to do with that. In those cases when an applicant waives their rights to permit parking, we notify the parking authority after the approval and they remove that property in their system so that no one can apply or receive permit parking at those future project sites down the road. So this is unrelated.
Thank you. And then the, the one I have to say, I can't find the, the number, but that's with the water, the water dam. I would respect the, the location, twelve, please. What location did this, uh, water, water dam improvement subject call me about?
Talking about the dam improvement?
Yes, twelve.
Yeah.
If I could get an answer before my time runs out, please?
Uh, the four dams, uh, from furthest to closest is the Davidson Mill Pond Dam in South Brunswick, the Farrington Dam in North Brunswick, there's what we call the Arch Dam between East Brunswick and New Brunswick, just above the Western Mill Pond Dam, which is at Rudy.
All right, thank you. Let us find you to write. If I could hear where you said, okay, safety issues, debates and all being put up. Great job. Thank you.
Anyone else on the resolution moment? Seeing none?
Who's resolution? Second?
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskins.
Yes, except for number forty-three, I don't want to, so.
Judy Noddy. Council Vice President, Rastamira. Council President Anderson.
Yes. We now have items for discussion by council. We've talked about, we've had some questions about the, where the money, opioid, those, sure, to discuss that.
My pleasure. It follows a response to regular public request for how the city tends to use opioid settlement funds. These funds were granted to the city as part of nationwide settlement and court ruling to be used to offset the negative impact of opioidation on communities. The 2025 introduced budget re-uprises seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars previously avoided opioid settlement months and uses it accordingly. Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the Department of Community and New Services, support operations, particularly staffing services for dealing homelessness, homelessness prevention and drug addiction. Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the fire department. It's for finer personnel EMT services who provide emergency service, first aid services to communities. And two hundred and fifty thousand dollars transferred to the capital improvement fund and reserve for improvement for future needs to be identified. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. I'd also like to congratulate, uh, Ms. Judy Lapp for her forty-seven years in the City Hall. She's retiring. Congratulations to her. We'll now get to the public comment. We'll first throw off the Environmental Commission.
Yes, President, can I say something? A quick update. At the last meeting, the borough probably asked any updates on the permanent closure of Jersey. So I was able to talk to Dr. Suna, who is the Chairperson of the New Brunswick City Center. At this time, City Center is working on other priorities, so they're putting a plus on further discussions. Most likely, there will be so many discussions on this specific project in nine months. And I will figure out the, as to when that starts.
Right.
And I also want to congratulate the city because they're being recognized by the Township of North Brunswick because of the Port Blue Services that we do. I just found out that. So congratulations to the staff and anybody involved in Port Blue.
Okay, we'll open up the public comment. We'll first take comment from the Environmental Commission that has a, something to present to the council.
Yeah, well, my name is Raul, and I'm a secretary of the Environmental Commission in New Brunswick. And as an advisory commission, we are recommending-
Yeah, I'm so sorry. Can you come closer to the mic? It's hard to hear.
Oh, sorry. Is this better?
And just a little louder yourself.
Okay. I don't mean, sorry. So as an advisory commission, we are recommending that the City Council pass a resolution that will endorse the New Jersey Climate Superfund Act. It's S three five four five, co-sponsored by our Senator Bob Smith, which aims to hold major cost people companies financially accountable for their contributions to climate change and its associated costs in New Jersey. It's a polluter pays model, which is an environmental justice concept where those who cause pollution, in this case, climate change, should be paying for its consequences. It would establish a program in the DEP to assess recovery costs and to collect and distribute those compensative programs. It is more important than ever for states to take the lead in fighting climate change. Two other states, Vermont, New York, have already passed climate super fund legislation. And besides New Jersey legislators, in California, Connecticut, Maryland, Massachusetts, Oregon, and Rhode Island have introduced similar bills. Going forward, our city and our state can expect not only more catastrophic weather events like stu- superstorm Sandy and Hurricane Haida, but also more chronic impacts like higher temperatures, flooding rains, rising sea levels, droughts, fires, et cetera. These in turn impact our infrastructure, our power grids, transportation systems, sewer systems, water treatment facilities, as well as our health and safety. New Jersey already faces billions of dollars in costs for infrastructure upgrades, flood protection, and disaster response. These costs are likely to rise. Without this act, the resulting increases in our property insurance payments, premium, our taxes to pay for infrastructure repair upgrades, as well as our healthcare expenses, will continue to be borne by state and city residents who have not caused the problems and are not equipped to deal with their effects. This act will shift some of the costs away from residents and taxpayers, like us, and onto the, onto the companies who have contributed most to these, to the causes. Specifically, it targets large oil companies that have contributed more than one billion metric tons of greenhouse gases to the environment since nineteen ninety-four and have made, and have made record profits during the same time. They will be assessed proportionately based on their preparations. Many other New Jersey communities have already passed similar resolutions to the one we are asking you to pass, including Jersey City, Edison, Franklin Township, Hobo, and Pacific, and Torrey Hills, Hackensack, North Brunswick, T-Max, Workley, Livingston, Rowway, Maplewood, Maple Shade, Satomarch, Adam Tatcher, Asbury Park, Highland Park, Red Bank, Richfield, Neomia, Rochelle Park, Long Branch, and Atlantic Islands. The New Brunswick Council needs to support our senator to get this passed. Taking a stand and endorsing the Climate Superfund Act would demonstrate our city's commitment to environmental justice and resilient future of our communities. That's my plea. I sent you an example of a resolution and I think-
Could you resend that?
I did send it to you a month ago. I actually, um-
Could you do it again?
Sure.
You have got it? Okay.
I'll resend it, no problem.
Okay, we've got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just, uh, sorry-
Go ahead.
-housekeeping I'm required to. The New Jersey Climate Superfund, because it's a bill pending for review during the Senate, and so I definitely have no comment. And my council has, because I'm an employee of the New Jersey Senate. So unfortunately, we're not be able to vote on some resolution, and bigger or against, and we can't actually comment on it. Okay. That's just you, right?
Could you, you, uh, mentioned some, how it would affect New Brunswick and the public taxpayers and citizens?
Right.
Could you go over that again? Or could you put that into us, an email sent to us?
Okay. Well, I can't tell you the specific projects that it would impact because it, the law says that it would be a two-year, I think. I may have heard my mom. Period where the NJTDP assesses the problems, right? So it, and then we can apply it for our share of the funds. But the climate doesn't stop at our borders.
I think you did say something, though, how it would affect taxpayers.
Yes, or, or it means it'll go up because of flood increases and flooding increases and, right?
Right. I think that would go a long way to telling people, basically, you know, how it affects our New Brunswick taxpayers themselves and how it affects us. So that would be helpful to get to, to know that part. Appreciate it.
Okay. Am I done?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you done? If you're done. All right, thank you very much for that. We'll continue the other comments. If anybody has a public comment, please come up to the microphone. You can name an address for the record.
Oh, I just don't. I'm a senior citizen. I've been in this city over sixty-eight years now. Every night, I get a parking ticket. I've got like fifty, sixty parking tickets. Us senior citizens don't have nowhere to park. And it's ridiculous. I've got to drive all the way downtown to get into my apartment. I'll come out of my car by the library. There's a ticket on my car. I don't move my car by eight o'clock. I'm a diablo. And it's not fair what we have to go through.
Hey, Meryl Bear, exactly, are you, do you have parking tickets? Are you getting these?
Right.
Living City Avenue?
Across the street from my house, right?
Living City?
I park forty feet from the stop sign. Besides, I have to park fifty feet from the stop sign.
Okay.
And it's just not me. It's a bunch of us senior citizens over here.
Sad to say because you live-
And you live on Livingston?
And you live on Livingston?
I've been a senior citizen, though. I've been here ten years. Ten years I've been here ten years. This is where my social security check out. One ticket.
Is it location one sixteen Livingston?
One sixteen Livingston. Even the superintendent called. And it's not fair. And really, one day my car not pa- I'm told, got told two hundred and seventy dollars, one day.
Okay. So you are familiar with the fifty feet now?
Yeah, but I'm really clear that-
Anything else?
No, the law knows this, that it, it, we need, we, you gotta do something better. Gotta do something better.
Okay. See what we can do.
I'll speak to you, but don't do that, ma'am, because I'm going to skip up for you right now. Uh, Daniel Moore, you know this wasn't part of my thing, but I will speak fast. I was just speaking at the traffic authority meeting, talking about what? Is, are people legal for people to park in fire hydrant? Do you know what Mr. Mitch told me? I believe Officer Bellfield told me, oh, and you, you don't have to worry about parking, moving your car anymore in front of a fire hydrant. It's legal. Ooh, you, it's not, it's not against the law anymore. Ooh, the fire department, what, bust a wind, somebody, whether to put the hose through. You know, they, they don't tow cars anymore. What, and like I said, please, and I hope, let's see if the police department released a body camera due to where first time, uh, the officer, oh, Doctor, excuse me, uh, Alexander Unit's best friend, if I can, uh, filter, if I correct it. But yes, he was recording it now. Let's see if they release it due to where saying it's legal to park the block of fire hydrant. But now, I'm going to say, on this matter, I will be putting up a note on, on Facebook. And like I said, I won't get to a news channel. I'm, as a black resident forty-eight years of New Brunswick, I have no trust of being safe around New Brunswick police officers unless nothing against the ones that I spoke to that, okay, I say you are safe. But I don't like to put their names after saying what Captain Bogowski went through, where he was the only officer, or that, that really spoke to me the truth about Alexander Unit. Why would he be tracking my phone? What, it would be listening to my damn calls, had my medical insurance canceled, due to where you don't know what the hell, how much money I'm allowed to have. Oh, let's get it on, because I, I will say, I'm not even going to mention the name, but oh, now that I got, I don't even know what I did with my phone. But wow, if Deputy Chief Zable, is he promoting dishonest devils? Wow. To make, uh, Nick Listefalbaco, you ta- uh, I, I'm a shark, like I said, excuse me, I need to put the medication. They tell me I can be arrested when, from Detective Keith Walcott, with a mace that I had, was released to me on April twenty-fifth.
All legal under seven point five ounces. And you're returning them to me, Daniel Moore. Thank you.
And, and, and wow, due to where what? On the insurance policy, due to where what? Due to where said, I got to pay for the law. Says, ooh, and says internal affairs said they did nothing wrong. You have no case. What type of damn officer does he damn promoting? What, then what? I was a victim again, assaulted by Lilian Mar. Officer Roger is bad three sixty-five. What, he said that what, I hit her first, I'm the victim? What, to cover up damn Talisha Robinson, where she hit me first? What, and then she the victim? But wow, I give it to God bless, uh, Judge Daniel Brown in family court where, what, once you put him on a computer with Lilian Mar, it shows due to where she put her hands on me first, and I didn't even damn spray her with no pepper spray. Wow, for her to beat the, beat me, walk up to the next street. What? Don nine one, due to where what, take off her clothes, act like she was the damn victim? What type of damn police officers are you doggone working with? And you council members are not doing nothing about it. And please, yes, I am very hurt, due to where what? You're still dealing with my arm? What, I can't get the damn surgery, due to where the police department blocked my damn lines? Every time I call a lawyer, even when I'm working on you with a damn collection agent with a credit card, with the ambulance, blocking my email, shut down two of my computers, and all, you cut down my body cameras. Why? Because you know I have all the damn evidence to prove. What? You set me up to be assaulted on, what, January third, February first you set me up. Then wow, May first, I was dealing with drunk brothers. And what, somebody going to say, he's going to say, ooh, she did it. What? I wasn't even over there. Did you keep trying to damn set me up if I had mental issues? Please, I told you before, you're messing with the wrong black one, because the lawyer's going to come, he's going to you damn dishonest, crooked, racist devil, one by one. Please, I am suffering. I felt Friday, I had to go to this damn order that she was giving injection. My blood pressure, my heart rate is so fast. What, I still haven't got the damn surgery. My arm is damn hanging, literally hanging off. Why? Because your, your officers are too goddamn guilty? They don't want it? Please, I tell you, I don't even want to look at showing you anymore, because you're not no damn police officer. And wow, due to where none of you think I'm damn crazy? Please, all I do is help people. But like I said, you don't like to see black people have somebody. Why? Racism! I will get to the damn news channel on all of you damn racist.
I'm, uh, April class one four three CDM Street. Sorry, appreciate the updates that were provided earlier on, um, the long-term plans for George Street and on the opioid settlement money. I do have a follow-up question on that matter point. And, you know, Mr. Drew has laid out a few different ways that that settlement money was being used, including for homelessness and drug addiction services. And I just want to clarify, does that money from the settlement for homelessness and addiction services constitute an overall increase to the budget for those programs? Or is that money just used, being used in place of money that would otherwise already be planned to be used for those programs?
Yes.
So that, that money is used to support that department for those programs. I really don't know how to better answer that question.
I think you'd ask whether or not the money that are taken care of, things that have already taken care of, the money, or if it's over and above?
Uh, some, some of the, the money was given, the money was provided, because we were a community that was affected by opioids. And it gives us an opportunity to support the programs that the taxpayer was supporting prior to this money coming in. So some of it does replace some of the taxpayer dollars, support of that. It also provides the department an opportunity to expand some initiatives and materials.
Good. Fair point.
So it, so it sounds, uh, like, you know, a little of both. There's an overall increase to the budget.
The taxpayer don't have to pay for it.
Not, not a full amount of what Mr. Drew cited of the settlement money that's being towards that. So it sounds like the, there's, there's more, you know, expansion of the progress rate, but the, the city's direct investment in the programs actually decreased from what it was because the settlement money is used in part to replace what was already funded?
A little bit of both, I would go with.
Okay. Um, you know, it's obviously, any, any increase in funding for these types of programs is a good thing. And, you know, I would encourage the city to consider, you know, future opportunities like this, where there's extra money coming in for programs that are already existing, to use that one hundred percent for an opportunity to expand and improve those programs, not just to produce the taxpayer, or, um, because this is the kind of thing that I think people would want their tax dollars to go towards to make our community better place. And I also want to say that I really appreciate the update from the Environmental Commission and the formal recommendation that the city support the passage of the Climate Superfund Act. I think that's an incredibly important issue, and absolutely brilliant. Hope that, listening in Brunswick, will pass a resolution to support of that legislation. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Council President, just that I want to take, stay close to time. I think it's important to point out that this opioid epidemic has plagued communities for more than ten years. And the programs that are identified this year were set up over time in some part because of the opioid, of opioid epidemic. And those funds can be used that way.
Anyone else from the public?
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Ramiya, as reporter with New Brunswick today. I just wanted to inquire if it was true that New Brunswick Police Department Lieutenant was arrested for driving while intoxicated?
Mr. Shannon, do you have any?
Um, I, I have no information. Worked through, and work personnel, but we haven't discussed it anyway. But I have no information.
Well, is Lieutenant Williams Oil still employed by the New Brunswick Police Department? Has he had any disciplinary actions against him?
I, he was just a personal matter of, uh-
So you can't confirm or deny if Lieutenant Williams is currently employed by the New Brunswick Police Department?
I don't know.
Is there somebody that can answer, yes or no, if he's employed by the New Brunswick Police Department?
I don't know.
I think Shannon answered the question that, you know, particularly in the context of being yes, it's like, will he matter?
Good enough, Captain Hoover?
Correct. So just for the record, he is employed as a yes, as implied, right?
No, but he, he didn't say yes or no.
Well, uh, he was mentioning that-
It's an odd, knowing- It's an unknowing, if it's an unknowing thing, we couldn't talk about it.
I mean, it's just a question of question whether this is an employed member of the New Brunswick Police Department?
I, I don't think it's necessarily simple as yes or no.
Well, just in part, is this person employed by the New Brunswick Police Department?
I don't know.
Then you could now transfer that question to somebody who I know. I mean, you don't know-
But they don't seem to want to, uh, discuss it right now.
Well, I mean, it seems like a matter of straight answer, you know, because a yes or no, Joe, one, two, three is employed by the city, it's a yes or no question. I mean, that's the only inquiry I have as a follow-on, I mean-
Do you mind if I just want to head off this tomorrow to look at the employee rosters and give an answer?
Yes, Mr. Council President, I don't memorize the little nine hundred sixty-seven, whatever, maybe in the city project.
So Mr. Drew, so get back to you.
That's great, thank you.
Uh, how do you protect fucking victims and then, and then-
Excuse me, Mr. Moore, please.
Good, I don't care what you say, are you the one that's fucking suffering? Good, I will get executed! What, treat that criminal right, stop treating victims like fucking criminals! I, I don't care about a racist son of a bitch that I don't be there for, wow! Please, you put me through the hell, drop it, I'm not fucking, no, no, please, I respect you, don't put your hands on me! I, I'm here, I'm just watching my own face!
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.